Okay, I'd like to call to order this regular school committee meeting of November sixteenth to order. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Bergoli.
President.
Mrs. Cahill.
President.
Mr. Gattro.
President.
Mrs. Hubley.
President.
Mrs. Lebo.
President.
Mr. Santoro.
President.
And Mayakoke.
President.
Okay, before we, oh, well, let's stand for the pledge first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Superintendent has a few memoriams tonight.
Thank you. If you could please keep in your thoughts and prayers the following QPS employees who have passed away since our last school committee meeting. Patricia Erlich, she was a secretary for seventeen years and retired from the North Quincy High School dean's office. Stephen Linsky, a Quincy Public School bus driver for ten years. Leonard Micali, North Quincy High School social studies teacher for thirty years. And Elizabeth O'Connor, food service staff member for over thirty years, retired from North Quincy High School packing room. Again, if you could keep these individuals and their families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Before we begin, I'd like to read the following statement. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And at this point, I'll take a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October twenty-sixth. Motion of Mr. Bergoli, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. We approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Also, I take a motion to approve the executive session minutes of October twenty-sixth. On a motion of Mr. Gattro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. It's time for our open forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the community regarding input into the Quincy Public Schools. And by member of the community, it's a resident of the city, a parent, student who attends QPS, or any employee of QPS. Non-community people are not permitted to speak at open forum, but they could submit written statements to the school committee. After giving your name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes, and an individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to speak at open forum? I see none. Okay, Superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. I'll start with our QPS student recognitions tonight. Congratulations to commended national merit scholars Nicholas N. Barcelo, Ashna Guha, Katie Zhang, Jason Lee, Sophie Nareen, Alexandra Stankoff, Sabrina Tang, and Caitlin Vu from North Quincy High School, and Ismail Ismalov, William McCoy, Dira Aravind Prakash Visanath, and Carolyn Tracy from Quincy High School. Of the 1.6 million students who took the PSAT in October 2020, these seniors were among the top 50,000 nationwide. So congratulations to this impressive, very impressive accomplishment. Special recognition to North Quincy High School senior Dominique Deng, who was a national merit semifinalist scoring in the top 1% nationwide. So congratulations to Dominique Deng. And congratulations to the 210 graduating seniors in the class of 2023, who have been awarded the John and Abigail Adams scholarships for scoring in the top 25% district-wide on the MCAS assessments. The scholarship covers eight semesters of tuition at any University of Massachusetts, state university, or community college campus. So congratulations to these individuals.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, item B, Superintendent.
Next is the upcoming QPS in the city of Quincy, important events on Thanksgiving morning, of course. The North Quincy High School and Quincy High School football teams will meet for the annual competition. Kickoff is at 10:00 a.m. at Veterans Memorial Stadium, so we're all looking forward to that. Good luck to both teams. In the spirit of the holiday season, Mayakoke and the Quincy School Community Partnership are once again sponsoring the 'Tis the Season Symphony and Song on December first at 7:00 p.m. in the Quincy High School auditorium. The concert features the Quincy Symphony Orchestra under the direction of Yoichi Yodogawa, and performances from Quincy Public School student musicians in the John Adams Orchestra and the Combined High School Core Group. So we're looking forward to that, and I encourage the public to attend as well and enjoy this great annual event. And Central Middle School's Drama Club is presenting the Peter Pan production on Thursday, December first, and Friday, December second at 7:00 p.m., and Saturday, December third at 2:00 p.m. It will be a fantastic production, and again, I invite all of those who can participate to see this event for our students at Central Middle School to do so. Everyone certainly here is looking forward to it. So with that, that ends my superintendent's report.
Okay. Let's move to old business. Item A, Superintendent's 2021-2022 summative evaluation. Mayakoke.
Well, in your packets, you all have received the summative evaluation form for the superintendent, based on your input for 2021-2022 school year. Superintendent met or made significant progress towards his goals and received an all-rating of proficient with an exceptional rating for family and community engagement. So I appreciate you all filling out the information, participating in it. And of course, the superintendent will be finalizing his goals. You'll be hearing from him December and his goals. So we'd need a motion to accept the evaluation.
Okay, a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo. We approve. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bergoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayakoke?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Let's move to item B, MASC general session resolutions. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. November 2nd through 5th, I went to the Mass Association of School Committees Conference along with my colleague, Mrs. Lebo. And the resolutions that we had voted on, there were six of them. Short version, they all passed. They were all yeses. Wasn't a lot of conversation on many of them, except where they tried to pass amendments that did not pass. The first resolution was the only one that actually had a vote count, which was seventy-eight yeses to seven noes, and Quincy Public Schools abstained along with two other schools. And notes that I wanted to point out, though, on resolution five, which was the one about financial literacy in the schools. Wareham spoke about already having this as a graduation requirement. Westboro noted that they have a bank in their high school, which has hired students to work in, in their, in their high school. Falmouth currently has a comprehensive K through 12 financial literacy in their schools. And Marlborough noted that the Rotarians in their city do a financial literacy day, which I found as good takeaways. Also from the conference, an interesting session that I went to was on effective meetings, planning, and implementations, which I plan to move into. Policy Subcommittee for Review is having a, establishing a year-long agenda, which is something that they recommended in this workshop, in this conference. And they referenced looking at Danvers and Melrose for examples, if any of my colleagues would like to look at this. I put a copy of this in the bag that I gave everybody the other day. So if you want to take a look at the rest of the notes from this meeting that I went to, it was really, really interesting. And I'll leave it at that.
Comments, questions? Just wanted to thank you both for representing us there. How many school systems?
It was very, very crowded. I can't imagine how many.
But, I mean, we're the only one abstaining from a vote with one of the...
There was, I believe, three that abstained from that vote. That one was, there was seventy-six yeses, seven noes. Those were the ones that raised their hand that they abstained. Other people just, possibly just didn't want to say anything.
Well, thank you again. Okay, item C, policy 9.7.12, service animals. Open for discussion. This item will be eligible for a vote at the December seventh meeting. Mr. Bergoli?
Yes, this item came up at the October twenty-sixth meeting of the policy subcommittee. It's an update to reflect current state regulations and has been reviewed by legal counsel. Is there any discussion on this item?
Comments, questions? Mrs. Lebo?
Just a comment. Mr. Santoro, we already, we did have a discussion on this at the subcommittee meeting. So if anybody wants to read it, is it listed someplace? Will the public see it? Is it listed?
It will be.
It will be tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So this is eligible for a vote this evening?
December seventh.
The next meeting.
Next one.
Okay, item D, naming Point Webster Middle School field for Private John Mariano. This also is eligible for a vote on December seventh. Mr. Bergoli?
Mayakoke asked the subcommittee to consider naming the New Point Webster Middle School field for Private John Mariano. Private Mariano grew up in the neighborhood and attended Point Junior High School and Quincy High School before serving in the U.S. Army. He was killed in action in Korea in 1952.
Okay, we'll leave that on the table till December seventh and move to new business. The English Learner's Program Improvement Plan will be presented by Ms. Wojcik. And Superintendent, unless you have anything to say, the floor is Ms. Wojcik's.
Absolutely, yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me now? Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Wojcik, and I'm the coordinator of English Learner Education. I'm here with a very grateful heart for your financial support in hiring the family liaisons, who I would like to introduce to you now. Sitting on the far left-hand side of me is Ray Lau. Sitting on my immediate left side is Bin Wu. Sitting on my immediate right-hand side is Laura Tong. And sitting on the far right-hand side of me is Moshi Dong. Later on in this presentation, the family liaisons will share their detailed achievements in reaching goal three, entitled family liaisons. Now it is my pleasure to share the mission statement here. This statement is embraced well by the EL teachers, who advocate for an equitable experience for all students and families, who create a welcoming environment, who acknowledge and celebrate the diversity of the school community. Thank you, EL teachers. The program design is outlined here. The English Learner Education Program provides support through kindergarten through grade twelve for our English learners with classes to develop their speaking, listening, reading, and writing skills. As noted here by the two bullets, we have sheltered English immersion, which refers to the students attending the math, science, and social studies with teachers who have received some teacher training to work with students who are learning English. The second bullet notes English as a second language instruction or English language development instruction for those classes, English classes with the highly trained EL teachers, offering small group instruction at the student's English language level. Frequently asked questions by the families that come in. What is the cost for my child to participate in the program? What grades can attend the program? Where is the program in one of the classes? The family's frequently asked questions guided the first LPAC meeting scheduled on November third. Goal one, I love the checkbox, goal met. During the 21-22 school year, we were pleased to have our English learners back together in school after at least 90% had attended classes remotely, with only 46% of the students meeting the state's identified benchmark. With the student success plans, the EL teachers noted additional instruction and support. With the students back in school, we saw the 10% increase. With 56% of the students meeting the state's benchmark, we had met the goal. Goal number two, we're looking at the English Learner Parent Advisory Council Board. We met this goal with a working LPAC board, clear roles and responsibilities, completed bylaws and procedures, and quarterly scheduled LPAC meetings. I had the pleasure of working with the board directly, meeting with them every two weeks. Even after our board meetings ended at eight o'clock in the evening, I still received emails and updates later on. The board worked until the tasks were done. They were truly committed to supporting the English learners and their families. The LPAC board identified community resources so that the LPAC president and I could meet with community partners about sharing information with the families of our English learners. When community resources were only written in English, the family liaisons here, in the staff, helped to translate them. Another frequently asked question was about adult English classes. The community partners were a great resource for the families with this. Now we look at how they connected at events. The board was very active in educating the community about the English Learner Parent Advisory Council, as well as the English Learner Education Program. All board members attended citywide PTO meetings during the open houses and report card conferences. All board members had a table at their designated school with information for the families to learn about the council in Quincy Resources. All members were constantly sharing about this council and its mission in everyday conversation. All right. For people who didn't find themselves in a conversation with the board members, this council developed a social media presence through Facebook and Instagram. When families needed support and resources, they accessed an online email address to reach the board. Since all board members had access to this email, they were able to answer questions and provide resources quickly. When they needed support through an interpreter, they contacted the family liaisons. Well done to the LPAC board last year. Thank you so much for your support. And I'd like to introduce the LPAC board for this year. We have LPAC president Michaela Rousseau, vice president Deng Trang, event coordinator Shatzu Dong, who are watching this school committee meeting right now, and I look forward to our next meeting. Goal number three, entitled family liaisons. Again, I love the checkbox, goal met. The family liaisons will share this in more detail later on. When we look at family liaisons, in particular, think of it as the cultural and language bridge. Before the family liaison share with you, I'd like to identify their three different roles. Roles being the liaison, interpreter, and translator. For example, when I need someone to welcome a new family to Quincy, I request a liaison, someone who has that cultural understanding. When I need someone to return a parent's phone call with a specific message in the family's language, I need an interpreter. When I need someone to write a specific message in the family's language, I need a translator. The family liaisons provide this support. Also, since the family liaisons serve as the language and cultural bridge, they will identify how they are this bridge by identifying their languages in sharing cultural differences. Now I would like to introduce Ray Lau, who will be sharing about the welcome packet, also referred to as the Family Resource Guide in Goal Three.
Hi, good evening, everyone again. So my name is Ray Lau. Besides English, I can also speak Cantonese and Mandarin. I came from Guangzhou, China. So talking about cultural differences, in China, we have more than fifty students in one classroom, but only one teacher. But in here, only between ten to twenty students, and sometimes some classrooms have even two teachers. In China, we can easily find a ranking order in the middle of the school hallway, and then always find myself in the bottom part. But in here, no one tell me my ranking, but my dean told me that I was the second best at my grade. So in China, the Chinese SAT can decide a student's whole life. And in here, I can develop in many different ways and become a better student. So as a complete family liaison, we not only help with interpretation and translation, but also we understand some cultural differences and know the new families need. So talking about welcome packets, after new students finish registration and central registration, and when new students start with school, then it's the time for us to connect with the new family by sending a welcome packet through email, which include a cover letter, school information, QPS welcome page, school calendar, school bus application, family liaison contact information, Aspen information, health information, LPAC, and community resources. We really hope that the information we provide will help with the new families to settle in more. Now I'm passing to my colleague Bing to talk about outreach and events. Thank you.
Good evening, dear school committee. My name is Bing Wu. First of all, I want to thank you for setting up this great family liaison position, and also thank you for giving us this opportunity, Ms. Wojcik. Tonight, I would like to share some experience about outreach and events, what we did and what we learned from them. Family liaison is a bridge to connect the communication between families and schools. And people in this position represent schools to build the relationship and trust with the families. But back where I'm from, no need. It because communication between families and schools is one-way. Good grades, all good, leave in harmony. Communication is not needed. Bad grades, get ready for the school calling. Here in U.S. school system, the communication is two-way. Schools would like to engage with families, and the families are happy to be part of the school life. So for us, outreach is we go out, let the community know us. And having events are the opportunities for the families to have engagement with us. For that, the trust can be built between us, can know each other better, and willing to share more from each other. For example, the first contact with the community was the multicultural festival. People look at us with new eyes, asking where we work and what we do. And when we attended and helped with the parents at the kindergarten orientation and the parent tea with the AL teachers, we received many thanks and felt needed. The families start knowing us and told how grateful they were to having us helping with their needs, and also suggested us to build WeChat group to communicate better with schools. We started receiving calls from families asking about school matters. What impressed me recently was the past summer. By reaching out to the families one by one, and we had ninety-two students to participate at CAMKANDU, which is English Learner Intergaze One to Two Program, which is very successful. The point is, with the assistance, we harvest appreciation and recognition from our team administrator, secretaries, teachers, nurse, and of course, the families. On the second to the last day of the summer program, one of our students have a temperature over a hundred degrees and fell asleep in the nurse, in the nursing room after taking Tylenol. We called family. The tricky thing is, we had two students with the same name. But after a few calls, we figured out the correct family and waited until the mother came. The grateful words made me feel like this job is really meaningful. My honor to work as a family liaison and work with such great team. Thank you again, Ms. Wojcik, and you all. So I'm gonna pass. Next, welcome my colleague Laura. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Tong. My home country is Hong Kong, so I can speak Cantonese and Mandarin. In my home country, Hong Kong, the amount of the student homework are much more than here. The elementary student at least have six homework every day. Plus, every week they will have a quiz, is a minimum. In some of the Chinese parent mindset, as many homework and examination are good for children, but we all know it is not. Compare the student here, they can have more free time to enjoy their childhood life. They are not bound with the school world, and they can build up their own interests. So this is what I want to share, one of the cultural differences between my country and here. The state has an initiative for professional interpretation and translation in school through three professional development addressing language assets. Language assets describe their supports, including staff and services that address communication barriers between individuals who cannot yet speak, understand, read, or write effectively in a shared language. We are going to show a video when language assets is missing at school.
I don't believe. No, no, no. I can't believe. I don't believe.
Yangın? Okulda?
This is important that you keep to know our home during the time. Obviously, I'm making sure he's providing good work. Got too stressed. This is not... He quite say...
Çok bugün evde kalsın. Eymesin. Çünkü çok zor tekrar bir şey yaptı. Birazcık zamanlar ala o dövüyor olmasın. Resleşin, resleşin. Resle. Anlaştırmı.
Okay. Harika zaman. Veremazsın. Thank you. No worries, it's cool. Thank you.
This is the result that using a student as an interpreter at school. So please avoid it. Now, I'm going to pass to my colleague, Moshi. Should we talk about the district interpreter? Thank you, Moshi.
Thank you, good evening. So my name is Moshi Dong, and in addition to English, the languages I speak are Portuguese and Spanish. I was born in Brazil to Peruvian parents, so I grew up speaking both languages, Spanish at home and Portuguese outside the home. And I also moved between both countries during my childhood before I moved to the States later on. So some of the cultural differences that I've experienced is, for example, the concept of a snow day is very foreign, you know, to other countries that have warmer climates. And so it's interesting to teach parents about that, how when there's a really bad snowstorm, there won't be school. But that means that that day is not just lost. We actually have to make it up at the end of the school year. So that's just something very interesting for parents to find out, that, you know, you actually cancel school, but you do make up the days that are missed. Other things could be, for example, in my country, the school never calls if a student is absent, you know. So parents might be surprised when they get that phone call from school, wondering why the student is absent. Or even the concept of having to choose classes for high school, that would be something that would happen more at a college level, not in high school. So those are some of the differences that we have the pleasure to, you know, discuss and help parents become familiar with. So also in the district, we have two very important tools at our disposal. We have, for interpretation purposes, we have a language line, which provides immediate interpretation. Perhaps somebody might need to call a family, and they need to communicate something quick. That's an instance where they could use a language line and have a three-way call with an interpreter and a family, so that they can, for example, call about an absence. Or maybe they need to arrange time and date for a meeting. They could do that quickly with a phone call. And then the other tool we have is an interpreter spreadsheet where you could actually schedule a meeting. Let's say you did the phone call, arranged for a meeting to happen a week from now, this time, and now you can go and request an interpreter for the language you need, in which case you would have an interpreter available for that hour or half hour. And this way, we can have access not just to the languages that us, the family liaisons, speak in addition to English, but to other languages as well. I want to illustrate an example of how the language line works. So before this meeting, I've talked to a parent, which is actually an LPAC board member, and she will be expecting my phone call. I will be pretending to call about an absence, and I will be using the language line. So mom knows that this is an example, but the language line interpreters, they don't know. They just think that I'm really calling to speak to a family. So I'm just going to show you how it works.
Welcome. For interpretation services, please enter your PIN followed by pound. Please speak the language or enter at least three letters of the name followed by pound.
Mandarin.
The language input was ambiguous. Press 1 to choose Chinese, Mandarin. Press 2 to... Searching for interpreter.
Hi, this is your Mandarin interpreter. My name is Sammy, and my ID is 680029. How may I help you?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to call a parent who speaks Mandarin, and I will do a three-way phone call with you. And I will be asking about an absence from school.
Okay, thank you so much. Could you please tell me the phone?
I will add the phone call. I'll call on my end and add you in a conference call. Okay?
Okay, okay.
Just one second.
Wait.
Hello?
Wait. Oh, wait, ni hao. Uh, ni hao. Uh, I'm... I'm Sammy. I'm the发音. Can you? 可以，可以，可以. Ah,谢谢. Okay. Then, she's here, and could you please...
Hi, Ms. Deng. I'm calling from Ryan's school. My name is Ms. Dong.
Uh, hi. Uh-huh. Uh, I'm Sammy. She's calling. I'm the老师. Okay, ma'am?
I...
Hello, ma'am?
I was calling because Ryan didn't come to school today, and I'm wondering everything is okay?
Uh-huh. 呃，他还好，就是有点肚子不舒服. 啊，肚子不舒服啊，谢谢，谢谢. Uh, yes, everything is okay, but today he's not feeling well because of abdominal discomfort or just having a pain in abdomen. So that's why he's not there.
Oh, I see. Well, I hope he feels better and let us know if he doesn't come to school tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. Uh-huh. 呃，可以的，谢谢. Uh-huh. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, have a good night.
好吧，谢谢你，再见. 再见. Uh-huh, okay, bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Uh, thanks for using our services. Anything else I can do for you?
That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, have a good day, bye.
You too. So that's, you know, how we use the language line to communicate with the family when you don't speak the same language. In this next slide, you can see a list of best practices when working with an interpreter. This has been shared. We share them whenever we confirm an interpreter. We share with the person requesting so that they can take a look and be prepared for a meeting. And we've also shared this list at some presentations in the district, including a presentation to forty EL teachers and then a mentor meeting with one hundred and thirty staff members from the district. So this list, the first bullet says, "It's important to provide interpreter with relevant information ahead of time." This is really important for especially a meeting where there may be a lot of specialists, maybe an IEP meeting. The interpreter may need to look up some terms beforehand. So as much information as we can provide them, it's really helpful. It's important to remember to speak directly to a parent in the meeting instead of speaking to the interpreter. As an... Instead of saying, "Could you please tell mom or that this?" You could just speak directly to the parent, and the interpreter will act as that messenger. Important to speak slowly in a natural voice and pause after expressing a thought or statement. If you ever work with an interpreter, you'll notice that they will be taking notes. But the longer they have to go on taking notes, it will be harder for them to render an accurate message. So that's why it's important and best to stop after every statement or thought and give them time to interpret. It's best to avoid side conversations because everything needs to be interpreted. And if it is a side conversation, your interpreter may not hear what you're saying, or it may not be relevant to the meeting. So it's best to avoid those. And using complete and concise sentences is always helpful. And also avoiding idioms. They will often not mean what you wanted to mean in a different language. And the use of acronyms, unless you are spelling out what the acronym actually means at the beginning, it also won't have any meaning to the listener. So these are some things to keep in mind. And thank you for your time. And I'll turn the time over to Heather to continue with our goals for this year.
Thank you, Moshi. We have five goals for this year, starting with Goal One for the Student Success Plans. Goal One actually addresses the English learner's incremental gains as we move towards pre-pandemic progress. The state provides each student with an English proficiency benchmark based on their access testing performance over time. For the students who don't reach the state's benchmark, Quincy Public Schools is committed to working with the students to meet the identified benchmark and receive the necessary support. This process includes the EL teachers creating a student success plan with either a goal for literacy, with reading and writing, or an oral language goal focusing on listening and speaking. Throughout the year, the teachers provide additional support and instruction for the students to make progress in English. The state's results are typically reported to the district in June. And the typical range for our English learners to meet the state's benchmark as a district is between sixty-six and seventy-four percent. Goal Two, we're looking at the State Seal of Bilinguacy. Last year, this was a goal. After consulting with the state about its launch, we are better prepared to roll it out this year. The State Seal of Bilinguacy recognizes students who have achieved high levels of proficiency in English as well as one or more additional languages. In order to earn the State Seal of Bilinguacy, the students must meet three criteria. They must demonstrate high English proficiency scores as measured by the state's MCAS test. The students must also earn a high level of proficiency on a state-approved world language assessment. And then lastly, the students must satisfy all other graduation requirements. The seal will appear on the diploma and transcripts, and we look forward to honoring the language expertise in diversity in Quincy through this initiative. Goal Three looks at social media networks. The family liaisons quickly educated me about the social media platforms, WeChat and WhatsApp. The Chinese community is very familiar with the WeChat because they use it on a regular basis to keep in touch with family and friends outside the United States. The Portuguese and Spanish-speaking families use WhatsApp for the same reason. Also, I'm very excited about reaching more families who don't use email. This would be the method to reach them. Goal Four, Parent Academies. The parent academies were discussed during weekly meetings with our partner, Quincy Asian Resources. Although Quincy Asian Resources provide the free family literacy classes for the families with some English at the intermediate level to understand the topics surrounding the Quincy Public School system, we needed to address the growing population with limited to no English who wants to better understand the American public school system in Quincy Public Schools. So after gathering input about possible topics to include in the quarterly parent academies, from the English Learner Parent Advisory Council to central registration staff, family liaisons, Quincy Asian Resources family literacy teachers, we are excited about the family liaisons presenting these academies directly in Cantonese, Mandarin, Portuguese, and Spanish, which allows the families to speak and type in the chat box in these languages. We had our first parent academies on October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in the morning, addressing the English learner education program, school calendars, attendance policies, and Aspen. We had forty-one Chinese families attend, fourteen Portuguese families, and nine Spanish families. We look forward to our next parent academy scheduled for December fifth and sixth about report cards and report card conferences thanks to the input from parents and the EL teachers. Goal Number Five looks at district translation. In preparation for this goal, the principals provided feedback about district translation needs. During PD days about family engagement, the EL teachers have been providing insight about language access through district translation. Input continues to be gathered to ensure a comprehensive handbook and database of translated documents. In conclusion, as always, we continue to encourage the families to become active participants in their children's education in the Quincy Public Schools and maintain strong, meaningful partnerships that support English learners in their families. The richness of cultural diversity in Quincy is one of the city's greatest attributes, and we are honored to work with these students and their families so that they feel welcomed, supported, and respected as valuable members of the community. Thank you for your support of the English learner education program. And now we invite any questions or comments that you may have.
Any questions, comments from the committee?
I have questions.
Mrs. Lebo?
I don't have to go first. Thank you so much, that was wonderful. It's so great to meet these liaisons, and I can see the value so clearly because I know some of the cultural stuff, I think, is my main thing for us to understand and our families to understand the culture that's here. So it's wonderful that that's going on. And of course, the interpretation is terrific. It really is terrific, and I love the video. I know that kid. But I have a few questions. On page... I'm looking at the plan now, not the presentation. On page... What page is this? There's no page numbers.
Six.
Six? Page six, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the numbers at Marshall, and I'm wondering why with a hundred and sixty-five students, they only have three-point-five members of staff, where it's more students than anybody else? Is it... And I'm wondering if it's at the level of literacy or what it is?
It would be the largest at that school is kindergarten and first grade. So it would be the level of support looking at the grade and their proficiency level.
So younger students don't need as much support?
Well, it has to do with their... How the structure of the program is. So it's like they have their support in English, and they have their support from the kindergarten teachers. But yes, more... Most of them have to do with the kindergarten. So they have a support in the classroom at the kindergarten level in addition to the program.
Sometimes that's a language support person?
It is.
It is a language support.
It is a language support person.
Okay, thank you. And then at... On page nine, there's a mention of the transitional English at the high school level. I was wondering what that was. On the bottom right-hand corner, it's page nine?
They have a class. They go through their levels, one, two, three, four. And then there's a class right before they have what is called your mainstream English class. So it's that transitional between a level four-point-two, still being in the program, to being totally out of the program. So that's their transitional.
And both high schools have that class?
Both do.
And did it's just one class for all the students?
Just one class, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
These are just information because I didn't understand what it was. The new kindergarten screener sounds great. Is that working out?
Oh, we're all excited because it aligns directly with the kindergarten access screening tests that we do in January and February, whereas the other one, it was like apples and bananas. This is apples and apples, so we have a better understanding of their language development.
That's great. I was wondering too, how many SLIF students do we have in the district?
We have about one, between twenty and thirty.
At all grade levels?
Mostly middle and high school.
And what kind of services do they receive? Same as EL students, EL?
They do. And sometimes we have additional support placed in with any time an EL teacher has an additional time. We try to get the group smaller, especially for the SLIF.
And how many students do you think are opting out of services?
About fifty-five.
And you monitor those students also or...?
We do, because we still have to test them on access.
You do?
And we still have to do monitoring reports every grade period.
And the parents have to opt out every single year?
They do.
You meet with them before they do that?
They do, yeah.
And the FEL, four-year monitoring after those, then that's great too. So most people you're finding were successful?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. They are, and it's so interesting... Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. They are, and it's so interesting because as soon as the content teachers send out their reports to me, I'm physically going through each one and seeing that they're doing fine in their content classes. So at least we know we're not prematurely exiting the students. We're meeting them right where they're at.
That's great. You can see the pandemic impact was worse for EL's, EL's students than it was for the general population. So it's so important to have these things in place. I love the family liaisons again, and I'm so happy to see the goal of biliteracy. I mean, that is, I mean, all of these people here would have gotten that goal when they were in high school, right?
Definitely.
They would have, they would have received that seal of biliteracy. So it's wonderful that we're going to be able to start offering that. Just thank you very much. It was a great presentation.
Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. That was, that was a fabulous presentation. It was so informative. That was really great. Thank you so much. Mrs. Lebo asked my first couple of questions, but to move on to, um, with the opt-out students, is there a way, I know how important it is for a student to feel like they have a seat at the table when they're talking about them. I don't see anywhere in here where it says the students are invited to participate at all in, in this, in the opting out or opting in or any of that planning. Is there a way that our high school students, if they felt that they were able, wanted to opt out, that they could initiate the process, or is there some way that they could advocate for themselves in a way?
Usually, it's the high school students that do advocate, whereas the elementary, it's the parents, but it's usually the high school students that will say, they'll actually email me, and they'll email the EL teacher and say, I think I'm ready. And that's when I start looking in their rec and go, oh, my goodness, they really, you know, and then I will reach out to the department heads and say, what can you tell me? Get in contact with the EL teacher for me. And then we will do behind the scenes and look and go, you know what? We're okay with this. We feel comfortable. We can support, you know, them from a distance and monitor. But yes, it is the high school, which is cute. I love getting their emails. That's part of my assessment to see if they're, oh, okay, I think this could be a good decision.
That's great to hear. Thank you very much for, for clarifying that. I just didn't see that in here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues saying, first of all, it was a great presentation. Second of all, Heather, thank you for bringing the family liaisons to this presentation before the school committee. And it's just a pleasure and an honor to meet each of you individually and for you to, to give your presentation, tell your story. I just want to say, you know, my day job, I work for a federal agency, and we have proposals and decisions that happen in communities across New England, and the team that I manage is responsible for communicating with the residents in those cities and towns about the potential impacts of agency proposals and decisions. In many of those cities and towns, we have non-English speakers. So we use, um, we have translators and we have interpreters as well, and they are so important to letting the public have access to their government and to have answers or actions or meaningful input. But the job that you do is about the health and well-being and education of a child. It's, it's such a crucial lifeline that gives access to so many parents that may not have felt that they had access in the past. And the language line must be like a lifesaver. It, it, it's phenomenal. So I, I know that Mrs. Perkins and the superintendent and many others have been talking about bringing these to fruition for many years, but having you before us and, and telling us your story and the interactions that you're having with the families that are so important to, to all of us, it's so meaningful. It's, it's really important. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bergoli.
Just on the opt-out, you said the student initiates that. What input does the, does the parent have? Do they have to?
The parent has to sign. In the end, the parent has to sign.
Okay.
But it's interesting that it's the high schools. And again, I love when I get the email because that becomes my initial, like, oh, who is this student? And then I can do my research and then, of course, have conversations with my colleagues. And of course, it's the parent that would have to sign off.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, I just want to, um, I think back to the day, and Mara, you probably remember this as well, when we had a wait, I believe it was for Debbie Jung at Atlantic. She was the only person that could help us. And whether you were at the high school or any one of our schools, we'd have to wait for Debbie to come, whether it be a special ed meeting, a, a discipline meeting, and we've come a long way. And we've come a long way, thanks to your efforts, as well as the people who advocated for this in the beginning. You think back to LPAC, Citywide, um, coming up with, um, we need, we need parent representation in terms of translating, and here we are today. So thank you. We've come a long way, and, um, I truly appreciate it. Thank you. Okay.
We would need a motion to accept the plan?
Yes. On the motion of Mr. Gattro, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That was awesome. Tell a story about cultural difference when I was teaching. I had a, I had a parent. My parent came to me. He asked me to tutor him for sign-up math. And I said, sure, let me talk to his math teacher. And I said to the mom, I'm like, he's getting all these, I think he's stealing the money. And she said, um, I just don't want to fall behind. I'll keep an eye on it.
Okay, we're moving to item B, Special Education Program Improvement Plan. Ms. Graham to present.
We'll try that again. Is this on? Can you hear me okay? Good, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Koch and members of the school committee. It is my great honor and privilege to be with you this evening to present the Special Education School Improvement Plan for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to begin by introducing to you the members of my team. We have with us tonight Sarah Anderson, Coordinator of Special Education, grade six through twelve, Simone Buckley, Team Administrator, Donna Cunningham, Team Administrator, Jennifer Leary, Team Administrator, Catherine Carey, Team Administrator, and Carrie Conley, who you met earlier when we had the early childhood presentation. It is the mission of the Special Education Department to identify students who are, meet the needs for federal and state criteria as students with a disability requiring specially-designed instruction and/or related services that empower them to become active members of society based on their individual strengths and abilities. We are committed to providing a caring community of dedicated staff and involved parents that meet the diverse academic, emotional, and social needs of all of our students in a respectful and positive environment. I'd like to begin tonight by reflecting on our goals for last year. Our first goal is for our elementary special education teachers. During the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, the elementary special education team worked in collaboration with the literacy and classroom teachers to administer the new Early Literacy and Dyslexia Universal Screener, Amplify M-Class with DIBELS VIII to all students in grade K through grade two in the fall, winter, and spring. After each administration, information was shared during ILTs. Results were discussed and individual supports and intervention, intervention plans were developed as necessary. This process will continue again during the two thousand two, two thousand three school year, starting in the fall of two thousand twenty-three. This will also include our grade three students.
Hi, I'm going to share about the goal reflection for the Learning Center and CARES Middle School and High School goal that we had last year. So during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, our goal was that the middle school and the high school, special education staff and support staff from North Quincy High School and Southwest Middle School was going to create a social connections group that would meet monthly to foster friendships and inclusivity between students with disabilities and those without disabilities. And I'm happy to share that both of the schools met their goal. The middle school, they met weekly, and the students there were part of their enrichment class. So the special education teachers went around to all of the general education grade-level meetings and shared about the program and talked to the students about what they wanted to accomplish in the program, how they would train them on disability awareness and some of the activities that would take place. And the middle school students at Southwest would then chose that as their enrichment class if that's what they wanted to sign up for. The high school, um, the department chair partnered with one of the gen ed teachers in the Social Studies Department, and the students in that class then were paired up with the students in the Learning Center, and they did activities on a monthly basis. So, um, both of the schools provided disability awareness training to their students in the general education, and they modeled for them throughout the activities that were going on, on the monthly or weekly basis. There was probably over a hundred students between the, um, Learning Center students and the students in the general education that were involved in the program. And I can tell you on the visits that I went to, it was just so heartwarming to see some of the students that you know just struggled on a daily basis, either academically or behaviorally, to see them in such a different realm and through a different lens and seeing them working, as you can see in the pictures, like hand over hand with other students. And the, um, special education students then began to join after-school activities. They wanted to sit with their, um, friends at lunchtime. And the other students, um, in the middle school on Free Friday time were asking the teachers if they could go to the Learning Center and visit with their friends from those classes. So it was just amazing. We felt that the general education students learned about differences. They learned how to be more patient and just to be kind to others, whereas the students with disabilities got to experience different types of friendships and a true joy and an acceptance in their school. Both programs are going to continue on for this school year. They both expanded. The high school has now reached out, and there are three teachers that they're partnering with. They are going to meet, um, once a month again, but the students are going to kind of apply through, um, their teachers, and they will kind of do a little interview. And they're going to be looked at for attendance and their grades, and it's kind of going to be like a two-year program right now that they're hoping to do. And they will be excused from one ninety-minute block of their class to do activities with the Learning Center students. So right now, that's the way the high school is going to do it. The middle school is continuing with the enrichment program, so that will continue on in that way. They also hope to create a logo and T-shirts for this school year and have a combined event at the end of the year. The second goal that I'm going to report on is the post-secondary goal. So last year, if you remember, we talked about Quincy Public Schools partnering with Quincy College and developing and working towards implementing a post-secondary program for students with autism, intellectual, or developmental disabilities. The students participating in the program would be fully included in the campus community as they develop capacities in career planning, employment, and other self-determined abilities that support their interests and activities. The students would have the opportunity to participate in college courses that support their goals, the social activities on campus, involved-in-person centered planning, planning, have paid or unpaid internships, and learn how to travel independently to and from wherever they were going. And I'm thrilled to say that we actually got the program off the ground, and it launched on, um, September seventh. We had our first group of ten students. We have one special education teacher who works as like the facilitator for the program, and we have two educational coaches. So to get there, all of last school year, from October to May, there was monthly planning meetings with the administration at Quincy College. We worked on a mission and vision statement. We talked about student profiles. Staff from Quincy College came over to North Quincy High School and Quincy High School and met students, observed them in their classes to get a true understanding of the types of students that we were, you know, wanting to participate in the program. We worked on staffing needs. We looked at the courses that were offered that would be appropriate, professors that might be a good fit to start off with. We also had to train the Quincy College staff on the program and get them to understand accommodations and things that they may need to do to have the students be successful in their class. Along with all the other housekeeping details, where's the program going to be housed? Where are they going to get lunch? How are they going to get here? What if they need a nurse? So we managed to get all of that underway, and then we were able to move to the fun stuff. So the students then, um, completed an application process that we developed. They went over to the college for a one-on-one interview with the, um, Associate Vice President of Student Success. They also, um, had a parent and a student information night. And once the students were accepted into the program, we developed a summer student orientation. That was for three days. And then the rest of the summer, the students were part of the youth work program where they were working all around the community and earning, um, money for the summer. So again, on September seventh, our first class was enrolled and on their way.
I'm going to give an update on our language development class team goal from last year. So our goal as a language development class during the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year was to utilize the four pillars of language-based instruction, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, to incorporate a variety of digital tools to support students' reading and writing development. I'm happy to say that this goal was met. During the two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two school year, teachers collaborated with each other and administration on utilizing the most appropriate digital tools to support their students, focusing on those four pillars of language-based instruction. LDC teachers were trained on technologies such as Read and Write for Google, which is a virtual toolbar for the Google Chrome browser that utilizes a variety of assistive technology components, such as, but not limited to, speech-to-text, text-to-speech, picture dictionaries, highlighters, and word prediction. Training on these tools assisted teachers in determining what students might require these accommodations and how to incorporate this technology during a whole group lesson. The language development team utilized a variety of shared Google Drives, folders, and documents in order to share resources and evaluate what digital tools are best suited to their students. A wide range of technology tools are incorporated into the LDC classrooms and can vary depending on students' age and abilities. Some of the technology incorporated into the programs or into their lessons include Common Lit, NearPod, Mystery Science, Boom Cards, Read and Write for Google, and Screencastify. The LDC classrooms also utilized digital programs to help keep track of students' individualized progress, such as Lexia and Symphony Math.
Good evening. The goal for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year includes the CARES and Learning Center teams attending a training and implementation of the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia, also known as ACE. Teachers attended trainings and utilized ACE to trial and collect data as a foundation of writing IEP goals and objectives to drive individualized instruction. In reflecting on this goal, the Learning Center and CARES teams attended virtual training sessions with the ACE team from New England Center for Children. The trainings included using sample students to assist with navigating the system's dashboard and choosing goals and objectives. Staff added their student profile information to the ACE and located goals that met their students' current level of need and IEP objectives. The ACE program includes highly systematic lessons and includes baseline correction and reinforcement procedures. This amount of information is intensive, and the CARES and the Learning Center teams found that they were in need of additional training before the ACE is fully implemented for their students. Therefore, for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the CARES and Learning Center will continue with the training and implementation of the ACE program. This goal will further be discussed further in the presentation.
For the occupational therapy and speech and language therapy team for last year, over the course of the prior school years, due to the remote learning, um, the related service providers had compiled a large database of digital materials and learned many new technologies in order to provide therapy to their remote students. Both staff and students- Both staff and students became proficient with using those strategies. So over the course of the last school year, the related service providers were incorporating some of those digital materials into their weekly lesson plans for their in-person therapy sessions to support student engagement and progress towards their IEP goals. So during the time when, oh, thanks, during the time when school was remote, the team had found all these great resources that they were using digitally so that we could engage the students in therapy activities. So it was looked, therapy looked a little different than it did kind of the traditional therapy sessions where we were using more hands-on materials and those kinds of things. So once all the students came back to school last year, we wanted to incorporate some of those nice digital tools that were really engaging for the students into their in-person therapy sessions as well. So the therapists really worked to balance some of their older traditional therapy strategies with the engagement that they got from students using some of the digital materials and balancing screen time with not-screen time during the school day. It was really nice last year too to be able to have our staff meetings back in person again because once we were all kind of in the same room together, the different therapists were able to break out in smaller groups based on their area of expertise as well as the age of the children that they worked with and share resources with each other that they found that they were able to use. So we kind of put together some banks of activities that the staff could use both in-person with their in-person sessions.
So I'm going to report on our goals team goal. So it's a little redundant there, but it's for the goals team. In 2021, excuse me, and I apologize, this says goals, we actually should be the one goal about the special ed. Jamie, you missed a page, actually. I'm like looking, going backwards.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
Nope, that's where I'm next.
Oh, you are?
Yeah. Yep. So I'm going to reflect on the goal for our behavior support team. The behavior support team is comprised of myself, our team administrators, our district BCBAs, and our behavior pair professionals. The team meets monthly to discuss student progress and to collaborate on differentiated supports. The BCBAs and our behavior support pair professionals are in our schools daily supporting students, teachers, and families. They provide direct services per student's IEPs and create and implement individual behavior support plans when needed. The BCBAs and the behavior pair professionals will also continue to support our CARES and Learning Center teachers in the rollout and implementation of the ACE program.
Okay. Now, I'm going to speak on the special education team goal from last year. So in the 2021-22 school year, we worked very hard with the IT department, who are excellent collaborators with us, team chairs, special educators, to offer support and guidance to adhere to all of our important IEP timelines. Through, we had done a self-assessment process in the previous year during our special education audit and we identified certain areas to focus upon for additional training and support. And we then came up with a district-wide model for compliance in the IEP process. So we did use Aspen to monitor and to continue monitoring the over-identification of students, Caucasian students, white students having a health disability. And we did that to make sure that we were continuing to maintain or lower our risk ratio. We did run regular reports to ensure adherence to all the timelines. Each of our team administrators met with our assigned school chair people. We had ongoing reviews of students at risk for significant disproportionality. We met with elementary chairs as a collective group in March of 2021 to review the findings of that program review and we answered questions and discussed common challenges when there were issues that were identified or supports that we needed to put in place. We have a shared document, a shared drive, so they have an easy place to go back and look and find, you know, answers to questions that they may have had or supports they might need to move forward. Okay? Our goals team met during, throughout the year. We really wanted to focus on parental outreach efforts to ensure student positive trajectory towards meeting graduation requirements, student participation and planning. We wanted to identify barriers to learning such as attendance, family stressors, social emotional concerns. And we did that through a lot of collaboration with key stakeholders that were identified. So we did meet regularly to review the progress of each student. There was outreach to outside collaborators and providers on a regular timeline and that helped to really ensure the positive student outcomes that were achieved by this vulnerable student population. Parents were encouraged to provide input and outreach efforts, provide input and outreach efforts were ongoing throughout the school year. We were pleased by the data and by the 15% graduation and return to general education rate of success. Close collaboration through all those stakeholders was certainly a key component of the positive outcomes achieved by individual students.
The students and caregivers of Quincy Public Schools are fortunate to have an active parent advisory council under the leadership of Ginger McGill and Sarah Wood, who's with us here this evening. In 2021-2022, the QPAC held monthly meetings, both virtually and in-person. The QPAC did discover that by hosting some of their meetings virtually, they were able to use the translation line as part of the Zoom and that did increase their parent involvement. And so this year, they have continued to do both virtual and in-person meetings. Additionally, they did hold monthly caregiver support meetings as well. In October, the QPAC hosted our first trunk-or-treat, which I'm not sure if some of you were able to attend, but it was pretty darn remarkable, where we had over 200 Quincy students attend with their families. And you can see here in this picture, this is one of our CARES teachers, Renee Bruckus, and her three children that decorated their trunk with us. Last December, we did host two gingerbread nights, one for our students in grades pre-K through grade five, and a second night for our students in grades six through 12 plus. The gym at Central Middle School was active with music and laughter when QPAC once again hosted Drums Alive. Despite all of this amazing work, unfortunately, we were not successful in being able to offer some extended-day activities to our students with disabilities. As you'll hear later, this will be the focus for our 22-23 school year. I'm going to switch gears a little bit now and talk about our MCAS data for our students with disabilities. As you can see, our MCAS results are concerning and we have some work to do. Students with disabilities were significantly impacted by COVID-19 and these numbers show just some of that impact. For spring 2022, in ELA, students in grades four, five, seven, eight, and 10 scored higher than the state in the meeting and exceeding category, while students in grade four, five, and eight scored higher in the exceeding and meeting category range than Quincy students did in 2021. That's just one example that shows that we are beginning to see some recovery for our In math, students in that critical grade 10 scored higher than the state in the meeting and exceeding category and higher than Quincy students in grade 10 from 2021. Although students in grade four, five, six, and eight did not score higher in the state in the meeting and exceeding, again, we did show progress for our Quincy students as they did score higher than Quincy students from 2021. In science, technology, and engineering, students in grade eight scored higher than the state in the meeting and exceeding category, while students in both grades five and eight again scored higher than Quincy students in 2021. Again, I just want to reiterate that we recognize that these scores are concerning and we have some work to do, but we are pleased to see that we are showing some signs of recovery from our 21 to our 22 results. Our significant disproportionality, as you'll recall, back in 2019, we were found to be at risk for significant disproportionality for the identification of our white students with a health disability. In 2020, we were found to be significantly disproportionate in the identification of white students with a health disability. As you can see from these numbers here, our risk ratio is continuing to decline and in both 2021 and 2022, we were not at risk or identified. We will continue to closely monitor the identification of student, white students with a health disability. School-based teams will ensure that white students with a health disability will continue to receive tiered supports and intervention within the general education classroom before they are determined eligible for special education services. And now we're going to start presenting our goals for the 2022-2023 school year. Based on the MCAS data, the elementary resource room teachers wanted to dig deeper and focus this year on strengthening their math interventions and supports that they are offering. Our goal this year at the building, our goal this year, excuse me, our goal this year is for, to have our students in grades three, four, and five with a math goal in their IEP show evidence of achievement in math as measured by a total increase of three achievement percentage points. As mentioned previously, we are beginning to see some recovery and we want to continue on that trajectory. At the building level, the resource room teachers have closely examined the MCAS results for their students that have a math goal in their IEP and are looking closely at what areas of needs need to be supported. In addition to that, they have attended district-wide professional development on the implementation of illustrative mathematics with Kim Quinn and her math interventionists. Starting in January, the resource room teachers will meet monthly to share best practices, resources, and other interventions. Members of the math interventionist team will also be working with our resource room teachers at ways that they can adjust and strengthen the interventions that they are offering.
So this year, for the middle and high school teams, after meeting and kind of talking about what we wanted to focus on this year, we decided that we need to take a deeper look at transition planning. So not only is transition planning a required IDA component of the IEP process for students 14 and up, it's also a roadmap to their future. IDA states that we must facilitate the child's movement from school to post-school activities, including post-secondary education or vocational training, employment, adult service agencies, independent living, and community participation. In order to do this, the IEP team must start with the end in mind. Transition assessments help determine the student's goals and their needs. Through the transition planning process, the team and the family can determine an action plan for each of the areas of focus, instruction, employment, and post-school adult living. So our goal is that during the 2022-23 school year, the middle and high school special education teachers will meet with each of their students on their caseload that is age 14 and up, administer a transition assessment plan, and then use that plan to write the transition planning form, which is known as the TTF. And we want 100% of our students to have an appropriate transition plan. So so far, in the month of September, we have met, we've done a needs assessment and we have started to develop some training materials. We created what we call the cheat sheet. So it looks at the transition planning forms and goes through each of the components and kind of gives guidance, suggestions, activities, things that the teachers should be looking at and working with on their students to create the plan. By the end of November, we're hoping to have a Google Drive created where myself and the teachers can add materials for self-determination lesson plans, different transition assessments, links to different agencies for families, and gather all that into one place. And then by the end of the year, in June, the department heads at each of the high school and myself, because the middle school special education teachers are their own case manager, we will do a review and make sure that 100% of the students that are age 14 and up have a clear and concise and workable transition plan. So for the 2022-23 post-secondary team goal, we are going to continue on with LEAP at Quincy College. That's what we decided to call it. We went back and forth with different names and decided that LEAP is the program that we had for our 18 to 22 students and it's just another pathway of the LEAP program. So some students may end up in a work environment and then students who are ready and able will participate in the Quincy College program of LEAP. So so far, since September, and I'm only going to give highlights because I'm happy to share that in February 1st, we're going to have the students and some of the Quincy College staff and the Quincy Public School staff that's working over there come and do a presentation for you themselves. So I don't want to spoil everything, so I'm just going to give you some highlights. So from September to now, as I mentioned, we have 10 students enrolled from both Quincy High School and North Quincy High School. They're in a variety of classes and they are sitting right alongside other college students that are attending the classes. We have the ed coaches that are in the classes with them. They do not sit next to them. They're in the classes so that they can hear the material and understand what's going on in the assignment so that they can help support the students outside of the classroom. They also have internships all over the city. They travel to and from in a variety of ways. They have Y memberships that were donated to us, so every Friday, they're going over to the YMCA and they're working out. They get lunch on their own, either over at Quincy High School, we have it set up, they can go through the lunch line there and bring their lunch and eat it wherever, or they can go out into the community. They can be found all over Quincy College. They like to hang out in the student lounge and go up and chat with the students that are around. They participate in all the different campus events. They're going to the sporting activities, they go to the basketball games and the hockey games, and they're working with each other and making arrangements to go do social activities. They are involved in clubs at the school and on Fridays, they're going with their group, they go all over to different community-based activities. And tomorrow, they're actually going to Snowport in Boston to do a curling lesson. So they're all over. And it's just so exciting to see them and I can't wait for them to come share with you, just the growth that we've seen in them as individuals and the amount of independence and the self-esteem and all the things that they're doing. It's truly amazing.
I'm going to talk about our language development team goal for 2022 and the 2023 school year. So our goal for this year is really focused on narrowing down into our students' executive functioning and study skills. Executive functioning is a term that is used for a range of cognitive skills that help us regulate our behavior and accomplish goals. It enables us to do things like plan, sustain attention, remember instructions, resist distractions, and consider the consequences of different actions. With the help of the Landmark Outreach Program, we are working on narrowing down study skills and executive functioning into three specific categories to work on as a team. Materials management, time management, and oral and written language management, which can also be viewed as management of information. This goal may sound similar to some of you because Landmark Outreach completed a similar sequence of trainings with our middle and high school programs and we now want to work on integrating these same skills at the elementary level. In regards to what I, when I mean about materials management, so materials management really focuses on things such as having students understand what materials they need to complete, to complete a task, keeping their documents for subjects organized in a central location, and how easily accessible their materials are in their desks, lockers, and cubby areas. As a program, we would like to create a consistent system for materials management that can carry over between school programs and grade levels. And we want to create a system that develops more independence in their routine such as using materials checklists and student self-evaluations. When we're talking about time management, time management challenges can be seen as students not being able to initiate a task, estimating how long it will take, and not turning in things on a timely manner. We want to set up classroom routines in our LDC space that offer structured class time to get organized, ensuring students have a way to keep track of their assignments and giving our students the skills they need in order to complete a task such as utilizing a visual timer and task analysis strategies. Language or information management challenges- Language or information management challenges can be seen as a student who takes disorganized notes, struggles distinguishing between topics, main ideas, details, and/or has difficulty summarizing and essay writing. As a program, we want to assist students in managing language through use of graphic organizers, supporting students by pairing visual and verbal language. To manage language, we can use auditory strategies such as describe the topic aloud in your own words, or create a mnemonic device to remember the information. We can use visual strategies such as drawing a picture that shows the meaning of a word or concept, and we can use kinesthetic strategies such as engaging in role play or matching games. Utilizing multisensory strategies like these can assist students in utilizing their strengths and create a more universal design-for-learning approach to their classwork while working on their language management skills of oral and written language. We hope to give our students the strategies and skills to become more independent learners through the use of the various executive functioning strategies, along with creating a more collaborative environment between classrooms and schools. And I also wanted to show you some pictures of some of the great work some of our LDC students are doing specifically in the areas of multisensory approach to learning language. They're doing great work over there.
So now we have this year, the Learning Center, as I mentioned before, and the CARES team members will be continuing with the training and implementation of the ACE program. They will collect data on three students in their classroom. Teachers will add additional students to ACE throughout the school year as the IEP process is completed with the goal that all students will have an ACE profile by June 2023. This process will provide the foundation for using ACE to create goals and objectives moving forward. Staff will attend ACE professional development that will provide the opportunity to ask questions related to the overall ACE program and website from a trained ACE professional from the New England Center for Children. Lastly, the staff will develop and consult with ACE trainers in the spring on a proactive feedback system to address challenges related to the tracking of student data using ACE.
So for our related service providers for this year, an ongoing challenge for any of these related service providers who pull children out into small groups is having the students generalize the skills they're learning during their therapy sessions back into their classroom setting. So things we know they can do well when they're with the therapist in a different setting. We want to see them using those skills throughout the whole school day. Over the course of especially this year, we've had a lot of classroom teachers reaching out to the therapists as well, looking for strategies to help support the students in their classrooms. So for our goal for the upcoming school year is for the related service providers to collaborate with the classroom teachers to promote generalization of skills across all settings and support student success throughout the school day. So we want to see the students using these strategies they're learning in their entire school day and not just for that half hour where they're with the, the therapy staff there to support them. The related service providers will support the classroom teachers in using strategies to promote fine motor skills, communication skills, and the use of sensory strategies to meet the individual needs of students in their classes. So what we're really looking to do here is to support the students in their least restrictive environment and have the therapists collaborate with the classroom teachers, whether it's a general education teacher, a resource room teacher, a substantially separate classroom teacher, any of the other teachers students may see during the day, so music, art gym, any class where we can provide supports for the teachers to use with the students so they're not just getting that support during the time that they're with the therapist. So the therapy staff, as I said, have pulled together all these great resources over the last couple of years that they've been using directly with the students, and we really want to work this year on sharing that with the rest of the staff in the school building so that everybody has access to those strategies to be able to use with the students throughout the whole school day.
I am so excited to have this goal for our behavior support team this year. Our behavior support team, with the support of our BCBAs and the support of the district, will be offering professional development to our paraprofessionals on such topics as applied behavior analysis and the implementation of behavior support plans. As you all know, our paraprofessionals are critical to the success of our school buildings, and we feel that they deserve, and they are actually looking for additional professional development from us. And the BCBAs that we have working on this team are absolutely remarkable and have put together a schedule for one Wednesday a month starting in January. Additionally, we are going to be able to support any identified paraprofessionals interested in becoming a registered behavior technician or an RBT. An RBT is a certification where there is an online course that they can take. The district is going to cover the fee for that course for them, and then the BCBAs will coach them through the 40 hours of supervision. And what the RBT training does is it really dives deeper into the supports that are needed to, to truly implement behavior support plans, working, working with students with discreet trials and small group instruction. And what it's going to allow us as a district to do is to just really continue to support our CARES and Learning Center students at every possible avenue that we have available to them. Currently, we do contract out for some RBTs, and we really would like them to be Quincy employees. And we've already had a handful of our, our current paraprofessionals express interest in this, and again, this will be starting up in January as well.
For our special education team goal for ourselves this year, this goal is going to focus on working with the IT department to publish special education IEP progress reports in Aspen, similar to the way that we publish report cards in Aspen for parents to be able to view. So in June of 2020, when we were all at home, we were still required as a special education department to provide progress reports to parents about the students' IEP goals. Typically, the process before that was to print those progress reports out and send them home in backpacks, hand them to parents at parent-teacher conferences. But in that June, when everyone was at home, we didn't have the access to be able to do that. So the IT team worked with Aspen to create a method of publishing progress reports in Aspen, which did not exist prior to that time. We've kind of inconsistently been using that over the last couple of years, still in combination with printing progress reports out to send home to families. So our goal for this year is for us to work with the IT department, the team chairs, the special educators, the related service providers, to streamline the IEP progress report publication process to adhere to the DUCI regulations. At the end of each marking period, the special education staff will work towards 100% compliance with posting progress reports in Aspen so they can be published for family viewing at the same time as report cards are published. So the regulations for the special education progress reports are that they need to go home at least as often as report cards go home. So when families are able to log into Aspen to view report cards, they should be able to view their IEP progress reports at the same time. We have been working with the IT department to streamline this process and to put together a specific protocol. And then in our staff meetings with all the different people who have to write progress reports, for example, when I had a staff meeting with the therapist, we talked through what the process is going to be when we meet with our, our special education chair people, we're talking through the process with them. One of the things we've implemented already for this upcoming end of term one across the district is in Aspen, when the related, when anyone working in special ed logs in, there's a message right at the top that says the dates that elementary, middle, and high school progress reports are due, plus a link in there for how to write the progress reports and post them so that we'll be able to publish them. So as soon as they log into Aspen, they can see that message right there with all the step-by-step, steps they need to take in order to successfully do that. So obviously, our goal is for 100% of all the special education service providers to have their progress reports done and posted in Aspen so that we can publish them at the same time that report cards go out to families. And always have the option to print them for any families who need us to do that, but have it in Aspen for everyone to view.
So during the 22-23 school year, we are going to continue to build upon the success of meeting monthly with the goals team to ensure that positive student trajectory. We're shifting, as the middle and high school team is doing, we heard earlier, to really taking a closer look at the post-secondary transitional planning. We're going to be doing a lot more support, work with them through assessments such as personal rating scales, guided interviews, and other kinds of assessments. The data that is obtained through these measures will derive their individual IEP and transition planning forms. They're going to, students will track their progress towards meeting graduation requirements, and they'll be encouraged to use the Acelis program for credit recovery as needed or appropriate. You may know that we have a new acting program coordinator as well as a new history teacher as part of the program. So this close collaboration that we're, we're doing is really helpful in providing timely intervention opportunities to support our students most effectively, and it certainly facilitates good team communication. The team will continue to work with key stakeholders to help students to successfully move to a lesser restrictive educational setting when they've met exit criteria. We want them, of course, to graduate from high school with a diploma, and our goal is to closely track student attendance and increase the rate over baseline in identified at-risk students. Assistance from those key stakeholders, such as attendants or court officers or outside counselors, and certainly family members, will be solicited, solicited as needed.
And our final goal for this evening is our QPAC goal. So again, our QPAC, under the leadership of Ginger McGill and Sarah Wood, will continue to increase parent engagement through participation in sponsored meetings and events and at at least one community event this year. As I mentioned earlier, one of the things that we wanted to focus on with QPAC is to start exploring options for after-school activities for our students with disability. With the support of both Ginger and Sarah, we have begun a partnership with a local organization called Sing, Explore, Create, which will be able to bring after-school activities to our students with disabilities. We are going to begin by piloting just at our elementary schools to begin with, because we want to make sure it's successful, our elementary schools care students to bring a music and instrument program after school starting in January. We are looking at beginning with just a, a six-week pilot, and then we're going to build upon the success from there. We, Ms. Anderson and Sarah and I met with the woman the other day from Sing, Explore, Create, and we are just so excited to be able to offer this to our families. It is something that our families are really looking for, for our students with disabilities, and to be able to start with something that's so engaging as, as music and instruments, we're just really excited to, to kick this off and let it begin, and, and then just to continue to build upon that success. And just to wrap things up this evening, I do just want to share with you a couple slides on professional development that we are offering for our staff this year. We are again offering the Orton-Gillingham certificate. Katie and Simone are offering the crisis prevention program to any of our staff that are interested. As previously mentioned, we are continuing training with the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia, or ACE. Ms. Anderson is working with our elementary school and middle school staff that have students that are doing the MCATs alt and working with the portfolios in progress. Again, we are working with Kim Quinn and the math team on illustrative mathematics. We are working with Landmark Outreach with our language development team. And finally, we are working with our paraprofessionals to work on behavior analysis instructional This is just a sample of some things that you will find in your appendix. And I just want to close by sharing this message with you this evening. The Quincy Public School Special Education Team has the privilege of helping our students with unique abilities, strengths, and achievements, levels to reach their fullest potential. As a team, we are committed to our focus on monitoring the progress of all of our students so that we can intervene as early as possible. We are constantly striving to improve upon our pathways and practices. In collaboration with our families, the families that we serve, we do provide the best possible services for all of our students. And I just wanted to share these fun pictures with you. So this past summer, over at the Delicazza School, we had the curious creatures come and visit us, and these are three of our amazing students that had absolutely no fear with having the creatures directly on their bodies. And it was just a, a highlight to my summer to just be able to spend time with some amazing little people and, and some pretty cool creatures. So at this time, I, I thank you for your time and, and allowing us to present to you tonight and open it up to any questions you may have.
Questions? Mrs. Cahill.
That's amazing, the work that you're doing. You need a bigger team, I think, maybe, you know, for all the work.
There's not enough room at the team.
I was going to say, we need more room. I, I think one of the things, when we have the school improvement plans, there's usually an appeal for additional resources, facilities, things like that. And, and your plans, this isn't part of that. Who do you appeal to and when for additional like resources, like human resources of support?
Sure, sure. So typically, I mean, I will say, we are, with your support, we are very generously staffed. Our, our class numbers are low. We are continuing to add students, and it's kind of over the course of the year as, as students are identified and needing special education services. If we kind of get to that tipping point that we feel like the ratios are off, we certainly do reach out to you. But most often, it happens through the, the budgeting process in the springtime, because usually by then, we, we have a good projection of what the fall numbers are going to look like.
And then, and so who do you present your, your budget needs to?
Our budgets go through Mr. Mulvey. I mean, I'm sorry, through Mr. Mulvey, but Mr. Mulaney.
Okay, great. And so just from my own knowledge, when you say, when we have the Orton-Gillingham staff at those schools, do we put someone in every school that has someone that has the need for them? You know, so there's maybe three schools or four that have a specialist. Is that because they have one student? Like, do we have them staffed at any school that has a student that has dyslexia or needs that?
Sure. So the way that we do provide that staffing, you'll notice that both of our elementary schools that have the language development classes do, Atherton Howe has two full-time Orton-Gillingham specialists, Snug Harbor has one, because those students do particularly benefit from that program. There are other schools that have a .5 person, both Squanum School and the Marymount School, because they did have a higher population of students that needed or benefited from that service. But with your support, we've actually been able to train most of our literacy specialists, our resource room teachers, so all of our buildings are able to provide that service now.
Okay, great. And my last question would be about the transitional planning, which is, is, you know, excellent, what we need to do. Do we do any kind of survey or outreach to the alumni who maybe had transitional planning to see how their plans work for them and give you some insight into maybe future planning and any kind of strategies or, you know, planning needs that the students might have that you can pivot or whatever?
Yes, we're required to reach out to the students after they graduate, and we did really well getting in touch with the majority of the students that we could. And again, that's, you know, where it came from, because we want to make sure that students aren't just home, that they have a plan, that the teachers feel comfortable and know the process and know what's out there for them, what the resources are. So that's what we're trying to work on.
And, and from what you have done in the past, you find that, that they've been pretty successful in putting the students where they need to be? Okay, great. Thank you. That's my, and thank you for your work. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Lebo?
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you very much. It's great to see the program, and it's amazing, amazing how much work you people are doing. It really is amazing. A couple of things I just wanted to comment on, the specialist list is amazing, what we have in this district. I mean, it really is amazing that we have all of those different supports. It's wonderful. It really is wonderful. So I'm, I'm pleased, so pleased to see that. I also was very, very pleased to see the PD for the paraprofessionals, so important. And, and it's wonderful about the, the registered behavior technician training. My, my question is, do these people get compensated more once they take this training?
They will.
They will. Because I know that this is a significant change in, in their daily work. And it's, and it's really needed. I know that we've had some incidences with our pairs that this training will help with.
Absolutely.
And it will help their safety as well, so I'm, I'm really thrilled to see that.
We are as well.
I love all of your goals. I really do love your goals. I agree, the transition planning is phenomenal, and to see it starting that early in the middle school and being that well carried through is amazing. I had one question from when Ms. Hubley and I went to the conference. We learned of the acts of 2022, and there's something new coming out. We learned of the Acts of 2022, and there's something new coming out about child find and mental health. And I'm wondering, is that going to land on you?
I'm not familiar with that yet. It's not something that...
It just went in play in November, so we're trying to get more information on it. But it's the Acts of 2022.
We'll collaborate with Mrs. Papil with as well.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, I couldn't quite tell who's going to wind up with the responsibility, but it looks like a significant responsibility of finding children who have mental health needs. And because you had talked about physical and health impairment, I don't know if mental health is going to wind up on you as well, but then that child find is getting, then we have to provide services once we find those children. So where we get those services, and it's a big, it's a big concern. I mean, it's probably a wonderful thing, but it is a big concern. So I'd be interested to see if, I have asked the state for some help on finding the slides around that from the presentation that we attended. We haven't gotten them yet, but we're hoping we will, and this just happened, so that's why you don't know. It's not your fault, believe me. They should have told us it was coming, though, instead of just enacting the law. And I'm really thrilled about the fact that all of your staff are using Aspen. We'll be using Aspen for the progress reports, so the IEP reports will be going out at the same time. That is awesome. It really is awesome. Hundred percent of your staff is what your goal is.
That's our goal.
That's very impressive. Thank you very much. I'm thrilled with the plan.
Mrs. Hubley.
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you very much for that. Just want to just, I loved getting to that part in the plan when I read the, in January '23, QPAC will be working with Special Education Team for Sing, Explore, Create. That, I got a heart in my book. That was, that was fascinating. So how many students do you estimate will be able to participate in the pilot program?
So in speaking to the woman that met with us last week, it's, we're going to kind of be flexible with it, and really, she said ideally she'd like to start with 10, but that increasing it from 10 would really be dependent on the number of support staff that we have available to be with our students. Obviously, students in our CARES and Learning Center programs do require a little bit more of additional supports, so we are going to reach out to our paraprofessionals and offer them, you know, compensation to work those additional hours. And then what we'll do is we'll keep a running list to ensure that any students that are interested will have access to it over the course of the year. We're going to start with just one, aim for success, and see how it goes, but we're, our goal currently is 10 at each building.
That is great. That is something I have heard over the years of special education parents really wanting this after-school portion, so this is great. Thank you so much.
That's all.
Mr. Bargoli.
Just a quick question. How many of our students are in outside placements?
At last check, it was 160. It fluctuates about 160.
That's a lot. What's the process for bringing them back, and how successful are we?
So the process, it's through the IEP process. It really is contingent on the student meeting their goals and their objectives at their out-of-district placement. When we do bring students back, it's done very purposefully and methodically. For example, we had a student last year that was transitioning back, so we started by having him come back into our building just one hour a day, one day a week, and we slowly built that up for him to meet success. And then when we felt that he was ready, then we did fully transition him back into our program for September.
And with your kiddos at North, any consideration or any opportunity for them to do anything with carpentry or some type of life skill that they could use when they do graduate as opposed to being a stop-and-chop or...
Yeah, that's something that I'm not sure we've explored yet. I know if students expressed an interest in those things, it's certainly something that we could explore, maybe offer that as one of their, you know, their work sites.
Yeah, I would think that they could, they could do something like that, given the training. So if you could look into that, that'd be...
They're working in lots of the 18 to 22-year-old students, even the high school students actually, they're working all over at the city. I don't even think we even have anybody in the grocery store. They're working lots of different...
These are post-grads. I mean, these are... Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor Koch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, team. Great job. I got a question. I don't know if it's for Ms. Graham or the superintendent, but Ms. Cahill mentioned about not much request of facilities, or the process, as you all know, of building out a brand-new, first-time effort in the city with such a facility that's going to be the DeChristopher Center. So I guess my question is, in light of what Mr. Bargoli asked about the amount of outsourced we do, do we have any idea how much that would be reduced by us having our own facility? I know, again, I don't, superintendent wants to comment.
Julie can comment on this as well.
Sure. I mean, it's hard to say at this point, but I would say that our intentions is to, over the next year plus, to start those conversations with families. Again, it does go through the IEP process. It's not something that we can just say that we want them to come back. The parents do have to agree upon it, and we really want to make sure that we are ready to provide the services and the level of services that those students need. I would say, you know, when we first looked at the center, our estimate was maybe about 20 to 25? Higher than that, more like 50. You know, again, it's going to be all individualized by the students through the IEP process, but I think there's a good number of them that are, and families are looking for that. They want their children back in our community. They want them to be in Quincy with their peers, in their community.
Just on that, I can comment just on the development of the program, and Mrs. Perkins and I, and of course, Julie was involved in the development of this program that is now under construction. The goal, of course, and the reality will be that it's a state-of-the-art facility, I think better than any other facility that will be in this state, because of all the resources that this committee and the mayor has devoted to that location. So we're hoping to reach a goal of bringing back, I think our goal was 50, so 50 students. Hopefully, it'll be more than that, because I know in our outreach to parents, as you alluded to, getting their students, their children, back into the Quincy community was top on that list, as well as giving them a state-of-the-art education and giving them the best opportunity to make educational progress for them. So with that combination, we're hopeful that we'll reach that 50 and perhaps even exceed that 50.
And I think as important as bringing students back is also having an opportunity to not send students out and really knowing that we have the facility here in Quincy. You know, there are students, you know, that we are referring for out-of-district placements, you know, a couple of students every year, and by decreasing that number, we'll eventually, you know, matriculate down into more students being here in Quincy and less at our out-of-district sites.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said. On a motion of Mr. Gattro, seconded by Mrs. Cahill, we accept these special ed program improvement plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, Ms. Graham and team.
Truly appreciate your support.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have Item C under new business, donation, hats, mittens, mittens and scarves. Mrs. Hubley.
Thank you. For about the last 15 years, I've run a collection for the month of October to collect hats, mittens, scarves, gloves for Quincy Public School kids in need. Every year, I give these items collected to the Director of Health Services. So I gave them to Andrea Huah this year to distribute to the school nurses at their meeting at the beginning of November. This year, I was told it was on November 9th. I always get a ton of support, and this year was no different. If we could send a letter of support, a letter of thank you to the following who helped out. The Seaside Stitchers from the Kennedy Center for the beautiful handmade hats and mittens and scarves. Quincy Rotary Club and the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office both did collections for store-bought items. Karen's Corner Boutique donated 25 beautiful hats. And the Knitting Gals of Montclair found out about the collection too late to knit items, so they went to Kohl's and purchased coats. So a big thank you to all of them, as well as others who donated on their own, and so thank you.
On a motion of Mrs. Hubley, seconded by Mrs. Lebo, we accept this donation. Superintendent, please call the rolls.
Mr. Bargoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D, donation dictionaries for grade-three students. Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. I'm happy to report that the Quincy Lodge of Elks, for their annual donation of dictionaries to our Quincy Public School students, have donated over 700 dictionaries to our grade-three students throughout the district. So I just want to thank the Quincy Lodge of Elks for their annual donation every year of these dictionaries that really help our students and families with regard to the English language. So with that, if we could have a motion to accept the gift.
Motion of Mrs. Cahill, seconded by Mr. Gattro, we accept with a letter of thank you. Please call the rolls.
Mr. Bargoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Okay, item E, donation of $20,000 in the athletics equipment for Point Webster Middle School from GEICO and Good Sports. Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you. Thank you to GEICO Insurance and the Good Sports Foundation for the grant of $20,000 in athletics equipment apparel and sneakers to the Point Webster Middle School. Principal Christine Barrett successfully completed the grant application last spring. The grant will be distributed in four installments over the next two years, with the first shipment received last month. Thanks also to the Quincy School Community Partnership for paying the shipping costs on all of these athletic goods. I was present with Speaker of the House Ron Mariano at the distribution of the first round of these athletic apparel, and I have to say, the students' faces and the excitement in the auditor, in the gymnasium was fantastic. So thank you to both of these organizations, and if we could have a motion to approve.
Okay, on a motion of the mayor, seconded by Mr. Bargoli, we accept. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bargoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo? Yep.
Mrs. Santoro?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay, item F, school improvement plans, facility needs. This is for referral to the Facilities, Transportation, and Security Subcommittee by Mrs. Lebo. Care to comment, Mrs. Lebo?
No, just we're moving all of those into the policy.
Unless there's any objection, we will move that to the subcommittee. Item G, school committee policy, sections 4.4 grants, proposals, and special projects in 11.7, gifts from the public, referred to a policy subcommittee again by Mrs. Lebo. Any comment? Okay, on a motion of Mrs. Lebo, oh, no motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move on. Additional business? Do we have any additional business?
If I might. It's a combination, I guess, additional business communication, but I know we have a great partnership with the Quincy Historical Society for many years, actually. So this Friday, they have an open house from 4:00 to 7:00. They're celebrating the 200th anniversary of John Adams Will, which created the Adams Academy, which is 150 years old now, and their 50th anniversary of being in the Adams Academy. So just want to let people know that it's 4:00 to 7:00. There's going to be a big tent on the front lawn. People are welcome to come by. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Upcoming school committee meetings, December 7th, January 11, January 25, February 8. These will all be at 6:30 here at Cardington. We have a few changes in the upcoming subcommittee meetings at Cardington. All those listed for December 5th will be moved to Wednesday, December 14th. Other than that, we have a subcommittee meeting, policy meeting on November 30th. Teaching and learning, we have November 28, 29, and 30, all starting at 6 o'clock. We have reports of subcommittees, quarterly budget and finance subcommittee. Mayor Koch to report on the October 26th meeting.
Everything is in order.
duly accepted. Policy subcommittee, Mr. Bargoli to report on the October 26th and the November 9th meeting.
At the October 26th policy subcommittee meeting, there were several items on the agenda. Mayor Koch asked the policy subcommittee to consider naming the new Point Webster Middle School field for private John Mariano, and it was accepted. The next item on the agenda was a review of a draft survey of the Quincy Public Schools' professional staff members about student cellphone and other personal electronic device usage in schools. After discussion of the questions and suggestions for changes, it was agreed that a revised survey will be presented for review at the November 9th policy subcommittee meeting. Last item on the agenda was a review of the proposed revision to the school committee policy, section 9.7.12, service animal policy, which is being updated to reflect current state regulations and has been reviewed by legal counsel. Mrs. Graham said the existing policy is significantly outdated. We have several families who have requested service animals as an accommodation, which should, would be documented in a student IEP. Before a service animal is allowed to attend school, the superintendent's approval is Mrs. Lebo asked who will manage the implementation of this policy. Mrs. Graham said the special education team will do so and doesn't expect this to be more onerous than other accommodations. Mrs. Graham also noted this policy is for service animals, not emotional support animals. Mrs. Cahill asked who certifies that the animals are appropriately trained and the need is documented. Mrs. Graham said the IEP would first evaluate if the student's disability calls for a service animal, but the accommodation has to be evaluated, updated annually. At the November 9th subcommittee meeting, Quincy High School Principal Keith Ford and North Quincy High School Principal Dan Gilbert spoke with school committee about their banning of cellphone usage during class time for this school year. Both principals agree that the cellphone usage during class time is a distraction and that the new policy has been effective. Mr. Gilbert said the middle schools do not allow cellphones to be used during the school day, and he also, the balance of allowing, the balance of allowing students to use cellphones during school or lunch or study has been good. Mrs. Hubley asked what school committee can do to make this policy enforceable. Mr. Ford said that helping to educate parents, if there's a family emergency, contacting the school administration to relay the message to students during school hours. Mr. Gilbert said the value of the school committee policy is it will be consistent Mrs. Santoro said that we need to be sure that the cellphone policy is reflected in the student handbooks, and he also has concern about teachers being put into a situation of trying to remove a student's cellphone. Mrs. Lebo suggested a draft K-12 policy be shared with principals for their review. The school committee then reviewed the revised draft survey for professional staff members about cellphone usage in school. And Mrs. Hubley made a motion to approve the survey as amended, and we are going to be looking at that subsequently. The entire text of both subcommittees' policy meetings are online and can be reviewed by the public that way.
Thank you, Mr. Bargoli. Item C, teaching and learning subcommittee, Mrs. Lebo to report on the November 9th and the November 14th meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. On November 9th, we heard the CTE and the two high school improvement plans and four of the middle school improvement plans we have not yet heard from Quincy Point, but we will be hearing from them on the, one of those 28th, 29th, and 30th days. At those meetings, we discovered, as has been discussed recently, that the MCAS is on a reset, and so that the accountability data we're going to be looking at moving forward. And so our schools know where their, where their issues are and where they aren't, and so we'll be moving forward on the data that's coming in. We also learned that all of our schools are putting in the Open Parachute, which is going to help with some of our social-emotional learning and really help with us getting a curriculum map around social-emotional learning. I encourage everybody to look at their own schools' improvement plans, parents at home. They are going to be, or they will be posted on the, on the schools' websites.
They will be.
They will be posted on the school websites. So I'm hoping that all the parents will take a look at those. This is just a accumulation of, accumulation of everybody's plans that's in this. But this whole draft, the notes from this are also on the website, but as I said, the improvement plan themselves are much more important for teachers and parents to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubley. Item nine, executive session. Mayor Koch.
Mr. Chairman, I can motion that we get an executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations, and we will not be returning the regular session.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Hubley. Roll call vote?
Yes. Mr. Bargoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Gattro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Santoro?